Good evening. Welcome to the March 25th regular meeting of the Town of Milton Select Board. I'm going to begin by calling this meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to come back, I'm going to skip public comment for now, we'll come back to that, I'm going to move to item number four, which is a discussion, an approval, a proclamation commemorating Tuskegee Airman Day. We don't get applause very often at our meetings, so it kind of like shocked, you kind of shocked me, so. I have two, we have two families, right? Well, that's two. Yes. I'm going to begin by reading a proclamation regarding something truly significant that occurred before all of us were born, World War II. The reason that I can, because I'm the oldest one here, and my own father fought a World War II and four of his brothers, oh, someone waved their hand, they were here, so. None of us would have the country that we have today without the sacrifices that were made in that Great War, World War II, both in the Pacific Theater and in Europe. And so, on behalf of this board, I'm very proud to read and present this proclamation tonight, and it begins as follows. Whereas when the United States of America was drawn into World War II, African-Americans were aspiring in more meaningful roles in the defense of the nation and military aviation. And whereas the rapid expansion of aircraft production to meet the demand for air power during World War II in turn created a greater need for military pilots. Public outcry strongly encouraged the War Department to extend the opportunity to fly airplanes to all military members regardless of race. And whereas the Tuskegee Institute in Alabama was one of six African-American colleges and universities chosen to participate in the War Department's civilian pilot training known as the CPT program, and helped open the door for the first African-American military pilots. And whereas by the end of World War II, almost 1,000 African-Americans had earned their silver wings at Tuskegee Army Airfield, and almost half of those African-Americans went on to serve the country in both the European and Mediterranean theaters as combat mission fighter pilots. And whereas the Tuskegee Airmen flew over 15,000 sorties, which is a mission, destroyed or damaged over 4,000 German aircraft, over 950 units of ground transportation, and sank a destroyer with machine gun fire alone, receiving hundreds of air medals and more than 150 distinguished flying crosses, which is one of the highest awards that this country bestows even today. And lost very few bomber aircraft to enemy air action during escort missions. And whereas the Tuskegee Airmen overcame segregation and prejudice to become one of the most prestigious decorated and respected fighting groups of World War II. And whereas Sergeant Harvey F. Sanford, father of a Milton resident, was the youngest African-American and maintenance inspector to take part in the advanced training group at Tuskegee. And Lieutenant Colonel Harold E. Thornwell, M.D., a former Massachusetts resident and great-grandfather of Milton residents, was one of the first two black officers to attend the School of Aviation Medicine for an integrated military training course. He graduated as an aviation medical examiner in March of 1943 and served as a flight surgeon with the 99th Fighter Squadron. And whereas March is a special month for the Tuskegee Airmen, it was the month that the first cadets received their silver wings. The first maintenance crew began training at Chanute Field, Illinois, I believe it's Illinois, the first pursuit squadron, the 99th, was activated, and President George W. Bush in 2007 presented the Congressional Gold Medal to the Tuskegee Airmen. Now therefore we, the Select Board of the Town of Milton, hereby recognize March 27, 2025 as Tuskegee Air Commemoration Day. Given this day, Tuesday, March 25, 2025, sign by myself, Richard G. Wells, Jr., Chair on behalf of Roxanne F. Musto, Vice Chair, John C. Cohen, Secretary, Aaron G. Bradley, Member, and Benjamin Z. Dole, Member. So, am I doing this? I have two of these. Want to come up? I will gladly present these to you. What's this? No, come around, come on over here. Elaine, why don't you get over there? Let me take this thing off before I make a fool of myself.
Joe, superintendent! My God. Retired superintendent of the police department, Joe Harris. Come on over, come on over. I'm getting this picture here. I may have had these mixed up. One of the other members of the board, come on up here, let's get everyone this picture. All meetings are like this meeting. You say one of them.
We're going to have to...
How are you going to say it?
Yeah, let's hit your thoughts.
Yeah, let's get in line.
Yeah, sorry.
We passed the limit on time.
I was late, I was taking...
We moved it up to...
No worries about it, listen, I was late, at least I... So I have, do we need, I have an extra copy here? I do. And it'll be on the town website, but yes, I have one extra full side copy. So we'll try.
For the surprise, for those who don't know, the last gentleman who walked in the room, Joe Harris, is a guard, I remember as a young cop, a long, long time resident, rose to the rank of superintendent of the Boston Police Department, has lived here for many, many years. Great man. Okay. Now, do we have anyone here for, thank you, you can stay if you want. We get to the best parts now. They must, you must know about these meetings. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Anyone online? I see no hands for public comment. No signatures for public comment. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. So I'm going to move on to item number five. Now, we're going to move number five to 8:30. Item number six, discussion, update, approval, fiscal year 2025, school department budget. Mr. Milano, I'd ask, who's joining us? Mr. Loring and Chair, Lizzie Carroll, the school committee, please, does anyone extra, just grab, let me get rid of this sheet, hold on.
Ready?
You, you, who? Oh, you got a presentation? Okay.
Yes.
So just, I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll and Mr. Loring in a moment, but as you know, we've been working through current fiscal year budget over at the school department. We've been having numerous meetings to discuss it, have a few thoughts to share, but we'll turn it over to the school folks now, let them make a presentation where things stand, and the board can discuss it from there.
Thank you, and good evening. Lizzie Carroll, Chair of the School Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and thank you for having us back. We are here to provide some updates. We will share a brief presentation. I'll let you introduce yourself, but Mark is going to be running through the bulk of this presentation, and then we'll be happy to answer whatever questions he might have.
Thank you very much. Mark Loring, School Committee Member, Chair of the Finance Committee. Again, have a couple slides, apologize, it's just us tonight, Katie and Peter were not able to be here, but hopefully we can answer your questions. Here are the things we kind of want to cover, which is just how we got here, provide the background, where we are now in terms of the current update with the FY25 current year projected deficit, actions we are taking moving forward, and then clarifying kind of what the school committee request is. We made, voted on this request at our last meeting this past Wednesday. Before jumping in, just want to also thank again Nick, Amy Dexter, Joanne McCarthy for their cooperation, joining meetings, providing feedback, asking questions, very helpful. Also want to shout out John Cohen, who's just been a constant presence at all of our finance meetings, and similarly asked a lot of great questions, his involvement has been integral in terms of just helping us as we work through this, and obviously FY26 as well. Wanted to start with just a brief budget history in terms of kind of what, where we, how we find ourselves here. So, kind of started back in 2024, so in May, that's when the current year, the FY25 fiscal year budget was approved by Town Meeting, was set at 67 million, approximately was the appropriation by the town based upon the school department request. On July 1st, the new fiscal year began, and so the new, the FY25 budget started. It was later in July where we, I were informed by the prior Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations about a deficit within fiscal year '24 that needed to be closed, and found all kinds of ways that we were able to close that with the support of the Select Board. And so that was kind of, came to our light in July. And then obviously in January of this year was when we were first informed by the new Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations about the projected deficit within the current fiscal year, based in large part to a lot of kind of structural issues that popped up in FY24 as well and continued into FY25, and it's kind of what has led us here. So, those are the key dates. And so within this, we talk about a structural deficit, that is the thing that is really creating the challenge of us within our current budget, so just wanted to cover, make sure folks are clear on what we mean by that. Structural deficit means recurring expenses that consistently exceed the recurring revenue, so that we, you know, did not appropriate enough within the budget in order to cover the costs that have been, historically been incurred, incurred by the school department. So here are a couple examples that we've highlighted previously, but just to share some numbers. So substitutes in fiscal year '23, the budget for covering substitutes was $663,000. We overspent that in FY23 by about $150,000. In FY24, that amount was increased, the budget amount was increased, however, you can see that was still less than what we spent the year before. And in FY24, we overspent that amount by $400,000. In the current year budget, we actually budgeted less this year than we did the past two fiscal years, and so it has led to, again, a close to a $500,000 structural deficit within our And even though our expenditures this year are tracking to be under what they were last year. Utilities, similarly, right, budgeted about 1.5 million, came in in FY23, underbudgeted that by about $300,000. FY24, the budget line was still less than the prior year, came in variance of about $500,000. So again, these are just examples of kind of the, what we talked about, this historical structural deficit of we have not appropriately reflected the cost of these items when, when we have brought forth the budget, and that has then had significant impacts to other aspects of the operating budget within the school department, or the need to tap into reserve accounts as was done to close out fiscal year '24, but unfortunately is not fun, there's no funds within kind of any reserve accounts within the current year. So structural deficits can occur because budgets are based on past budget numbers and not a review of actual expenses, or due to rising costs and demographic changes within the district, so either those can cause this.
Before we move on, just to point out the way in which FY26 has been funded differently in those past several years, we are attempting to reflect an accurate cost in the budget that has been proposed and requested for next year, which is the reason why we don't anticipate finding ourselves in this position next year.
Okay, sorry. I'll just quickly repeat that, just to point out, on the table you can see what's reflected in our FY26 proposed budget, more accurately captures the actual costs of these two examples, which is representative of how the FY26 budget has been built for our level service budget as proposed, which is why we don't anticipate being in this position of a structural deficit in the same way next year.
Obviously, the difference between just those two line items alone is close to $1 million, even though there's actually no programmatic change within the school department, it's just making sure those lines within FY26 reflect the actual expenditures. This is a text-heavy slide, so we don't have to spend a ton of time, but this is just, again, further examples related to special education, again, difference of kind of budget and expenses. Special education is slightly more complex because you see this line here, the circuit breaker utilization, so we do have offsets, we get funding from the state, so we are, we should, the budget and the expense should not be 100% aligned because we have the offset, although the, even with the offset, you can see in FY23, the variance of... see in FY23, the variance of about $300,000, even using the full 2.5 million. In FY24, it's a little bit more complicated because we use 4.352 million dollars in offsets, but that was about $3 million within the current year, and then a million dollars, a bit over a million dollars of our full reserve account. So that's kind of what wiped our balance. That's why this is in the black, but without that, we would have been significantly in the red on that. And then you can see where we are within the current year. Again, about almost $750,000 deficit compared to what was budgeted for these lines within special education. The difference varies. I'll just highlight transportation, that's one we've talked about before, that, that alone is 1.2 million dollar deficit. I'll just remind folks too, at, at home, special education are mandated costs, these are not costs that we, we can cut or reduce. We must provide these services, otherwise we are legally liable and put the school district as well as the town at risk. So that's a background on just how we got here and the challenges the school district has faced. Update on just where we are as of now. It's a reminder, the quarter two report projected a 2.3 million dollar deficit that the school department would end the year in June at that 2.3 million dollar deficit. At that time, moved quickly to tell, direct the superintendent and his team to do everything possible to close that deficit and operate within their allocated budget. A couple of things that they did were implement a PO freeze, a hiring freeze, we looked to kind of allocate portion of custodial salaries to food service lines, reduce consolidated facilities purchases, along with conversations with the Director of Consolidated Facilities. We are, you know, got some good news in that we are expecting some additional supplemental funding to circuit breaker based upon the governor's supplemental budget, that also still needs to go through the legislative process, but that seems promising. Utilization of additional offsets through some rolling accounts, so tapping into those more strongly than we otherwise would, similar to what was done last FY24. And then also looking for ways to adjust substitute coverage in order to reduce those costs, given that that is one of the line items that is particularly over budget. With all those new actions, that was able to reduce the deficit from the 2.3 to the just under $900,000. Just want to share kind of additional things that, that we looked at. Again, 900,000 is not a small amount, there is not an easy way to cut that, you know, halfway through the year. And so lots of things were on the table just as relates to discussion. The, the key thing we were thinking about as a school committee was, what are the things that are going to have, which of these things would have a just extremely detrimental impact on students or, or on our staff? And so, you know, obviously you can see some of the things on there that we decided we did not enact, we did not move forward with because we felt it was just too significantly impactful to move forward with. There are a couple of things in terms of the capital funding allocation requests that we sought through the capital committee. Capital committee declined for, you know, legitimate reasons, but that, that was an avenue that was shut to us as well. We did look at HRS staff reductions, and just to talk about that further, essentially within the current fiscal year, to let go of staff, the vast majority of staff within the district are contracted employees, meaning that if we let go of them right now, there would be no financial savings within the current fiscal year. There's actually, it is not a path that would actually help with the current FY25 fiscal projected deficit. The only employees who don't fall into that category in terms of being contracted for the full year are these HRS categorized positions. There are 26 of those across our schools. There are office staff members, so they're the people who buzz folks in when they come in, they sign in them in when they come through the door. A lot of these are business office staff as well, the folks who process payroll, who process purchase orders, who oversee the purchasing process. So that is a large part of those staff. When we asked the superintendent to look into what would the savings be, the savings was of a size that we felt was not worth the significant impact that would have on schools' operations and staff and student experience and family experience.
And we would probably have had to provide substitute coverage to cover some of the essential functions that these employees are performing anyway on a, you know, daily and weekly basis. So that, those were some of the trade-offs that we considered.
So the items at the bottom are the ones that we have moved forward with to help shrink this deficit even further. As you can see, they, they shrink it, they do not eliminate it. So the projected deficit is still just under $700,000. So before we get into the request, just sharing some things around things we are looking to do, we've started implementing, look to do differently. You've heard some of these when Katie has presented previously, our new Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and some of the things we've talked about earlier just within this presentation. The first and most importantly is the fixing of the FY26 budget, to base those based upon actual expenses from last year and year-to-date, and make sure that we address the structural deficit, fix that moving forward so that we do not have a situation where we need to look at removing positions or cutting programs that are vital to students to address costs that we should know are coming because they're costs that the schools have been experiencing from, for year upon year. So that has been done, and we, as we've said before, that is a significant reason why the school department original request for FY26 was as high as it was. But that work has been done, and we feel very good about where Katie's establishing us within the FY26 budget and the school department's ability to operate within that budget amount and not be in the position we are right now and we were last year. The other one is implementation of a budget recasting. So we are asked Katie, and again, it was credits for her, her idea of essentially after the end of the fiscal year in July, once that's closed out, to take the FY26 budget, do a recasting at that point based upon the closed-out expenses within FY25, or within any fiscal year at the end, and identify any lines of concern at that point to say, okay, well, we actually ended up FY25 at a place that was above our FY26 allocation. Let's look at that line, let's see if there are reasons why we think we can reduce that line this year, and if not, where are we going to find that money elsewhere within the budget, and have that conversation in July and August. It is still impactful in places where you need to adjust the operating budget in August, but it is much easier, much less impactful to have that conversation in August than to have it in, in January when we started having it this year. So that's another practice we're looking forward to implementing next year. The addition is just, again, creating sustainability within the budget, the addition of the curriculum funding, this is something that we, we think is really vital. We did that through a reallocation of expenses within the schools' allocations for next year, primarily to implement ELA curriculum, but also have sustainability within that budget to implement professional development related to curriculum rollouts, because curriculum rollouts are not a single cost, it's not a one-year thing, this is usually a two, three, four-year process. And then also, you know, once the ELA curriculum is rolled out, there are obviously updated math, science, social studies, foreign language curriculums, there's always curricular improvements that we can and should be reviewing as a district to improve the academics experience of our students. And so having that within the budget year over year helps make that sustainable and should avoid the need for any large spike within a given year, given that we don't anticipate there, there being the ability to have that based upon kind of the financial projections that Nick has shared and y'all discussed here. And then the last one is continuing to look for avenues we can to invest in special education reserve accounts, build back the circuit breaker reserve. You know, the special education, as our Director of Student Services said, is predictably unpredictable. We need to do, our job is to do everything we can to make it as predictable as possible and to operate within that budget. But it is, it's a challenging endeavor. It is a cost that is going up well above inflation. There are services that we cannot deny students, even when they pop up mid-year, even when they pop up this month. We have some, some new needs popping up within our district that we're going to have to figure out. And so those are things that, you know, ensuring that there are ways in which those costs can be covered without coming back to the town and without impacting the town budget or other operating budgets within the town departments is absolutely something that we think is vital for the school department to do. We need to be able to operate within the budget that the town has allocated to us and the funds that, that come to us through the state or other avenues. And the last one is something that, you know, again, I credit Nick, I credit John, wasn't sure if it said, the Select Board member, just credit Nick, credit John, credit Katie, had a collaborative conversation about this in terms of this idea of this outside consultant review. We know finances are, are tight and are, will remain tight. There's, as Aaron likes to say, no money tree, kind of coming down the pipe.
Has no, no leaves left on the money, on the money tree.
So, you know, whatever we can do to figure out ways, we can lean on experts to, to help us do this better, that, that is what we're excited about. We're really excited about the expertise that Katie has brought and the ability that, that gives us to implement the best practices we mentioned, as well as other ones. But the idea of bringing in an outside consultant that would support looking at both the town and the school side jointly and seeing how, how those things mesh, places where the schools can get better, where we can be better in our practices, is something that we would fully support, be very excited with, as well as any other ideas that, that the Select Board, the Town Administrator has in terms of kind of that joint collaboration. I know, again, John's mentioned it here, we've talked about it before, and we've mentioned it too on our meetings, the ability to kind of get back to a place where we have regular conversations with this board about what we are seeing within our budget, what you are seeing, and how we, we plan as one town for one budget, is something that we are excited to do, you know, willing to do, and look forward to the partnership. So that is all somewhat bearing the lead here, but to move to the request that was voted on at the last school committee meeting, the request is to reassign the million-dollar free cash currently planned for the establishment of the special education reserve account in FY26 that this, your board voted on a couple weeks ago. Request is to move that money into the town's reserve account or another mechanism. We, again, defer a bit to the town administrator and this board, but essentially to put it into a town account that would make it available for a request to withdraw funds at a later date within FY25 in order to close the school department's projected deficit. Those numbers that we shared previously are our best projection at this point. We know there are still things, as I mentioned before, related to special education mandated services that are coming down the pipe that could increase that. There are certainly other ways in which we're looking to decrease that. The goal is to shrink that number as much as humanly possible before the end of the year. The goal certainly is not to get anywhere close to that million-dollar allocation, as we shared before, we're, we're right now right under the kind of 700,000 projection. However, we also want to be conservative and not come back to y'all in June to say, actually, it's, it's going to be a little bit over 700. So the, the request is just take that full million that y'all were already allocating to the schools through the special ed reserve account for FY26, put that in a different town account to make available for FY25, and then we would come back to you or, or whatever entity kind of in June, in July with the, the final number to close that, that deficit. These are the reasons we are kind of suggesting the reserve account. So again, if there's another mechanism that, that y'all would prefer, we, we defer to the board, but again, primary is having the funds available to be withdrawn in FY25. The other is keep the funding under the town's control, the schools do not need it, don't, don't want it at this point. We would prefer it to be kind of under your control until the final deficit is known, and then provide us the ability to come back to either this board, the warrant committee, whatever it might be, for kind of oversight and transparency of what the final expenditure amount is, and require approval of that board at that time to kind of fully close the amount. From our understanding of this mechanism through conversations with the town administrator is that this request should not change the free cash allocated to FY26 override, that the town is planning on leveraging to sustain that override amount through FY30, which is the, I know a conversation y'all were having when you voted on the override amount. So we do not believe this changes the override plan in that way, in terms of how that is sustained over those FY30, through FY30. And to be clear, the schools are not requesting any increase in the allocation to the schools' FY26 budget. Anything that would not be, kind of needed to be pulled as it relates to FY25 deficit could, in our minds, be at that point put into a special education reserve account as y'all intended. If there are other things that the town or town administrator identifies that the money should be directed towards, we're happy to have that conversation and, and hear those things, but that is kind of the recommendation of the school committee at this time, and the request, I should say, of the school committee.
You want to weigh in on this first before we do?
I can offer a couple.
I don't know if you want to, I don't.
So I'll just, maybe in terms of just procedurally what, so this would mean an appropriation of a million dollars to the reserve fund, that's appropriate every year at Town Meeting, that's under the control of the warrant committee. So the warrant committee can approve transfers out of it or not. Any money that's not transferred out of it would close to free cash at the end of the year, to be appropriated in the future at a future Town Meeting. So that process described here is correct, it just means, you know, say there's half a million left in the reserve fund at June 30, that'll close part of the free cash certification, then we can't touch it until free cash is certified again at a future fall, winter Town Meeting. So that, there would be a timeline lag if there's any monies left over, couldn't automatically go into any kind of a special ed reserve fund, but procedurally, otherwise as described, that's, that's correct. And then just to elaborate on, on Mark's point about, you know, we've talked a bit about, you know, ways to improve our processes, and the schools have talked about ways to improve their processes, and we're always happy to engage in those conversations, and where we could see, you know, an outside consultant providing some value is evaluating where things haven't been done to best practice, where things could be better, and also what investments do we need to make to maximize what we're doing today in terms of HR, in terms of finance? So, because it's not, some of the things that we need to do to do better aren't free. Another town is, is going to Town Meeting in the spring for $2 million for financial software. So like, these are big potential questions that would make our lives easier, but having that outside review to validate some of the things that we're thinking about would be helpful, and then able to, you know, improve our processes across town and schools. So that's why I'm certainly open to that. I think what the work we would need to do is kind of better draw out what that scope of services would look like, go get some pricing and bring it back to this board, but that's one way to, you know, give an indication to the public that, you know, we understand what happened over the past couple of years, and we're going to take every effort to clean up our processes where needed and implement some best practices and have that external review done. So those are the two things we discussed. And then I'll just add in terms of Mark's point about, you know, the Select Board Finance Committee, I think there's a, there's a version of a finance committee that we should probably have, and I think it needs to be more formal in terms of members of the warrant committee, since they're reviewing the budget and recommending the budget, members of this board, members of the school committee, who are, you know, on a dedicated group, meeting monthly, reviewing year-to-date reports, and engaged on that budget process from July through June every year. So I think that's something, again, we, we don't have to do, talk about much detail tonight, but that's another option for us is to formalize that structure, formalize that meeting cadence beyond the informal conversations and processes that we engaged in over the past couple of years to expand and improve our budget process. So those are the three things that I've had come out of this, but I just want, I don't mean to take the conversation there, but I know there's a lot to talk about in terms of 25 itself, so those are some of the thoughts I had, but I'll turn it back to the board.
Mr. Cohane?
Along the lines of the committee of two of the Select Board, two, one, two school committee, one of the things that I've found getting together is when everybody's in the room, it's so much quicker to get things done. You know, we, we've had a couple of meetings where we've all met together and somebody across the room can say, oh, we can't do that, or we can't do, it's just so much more productive. I would, I would be a strong advocate. Oh, ooh. Sorry. Where was I? Anyway.
Welcome to the show.
The committee, the committee, the, the committee of two, whatever we want to call.
But I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, though. We, this is the big, and I'm fine, like I've said to you all along, you tell us what you want.
Sure.
Under this, under the Charter of Government.
Okay.
Today, you are the sole person responsible for submitting a balanced budget annually to the warrant committee and to the town. So to me, I said to you right along, whatever you want to do is fine, but I think that's the least of what's before us for tonight.
For sure.
Nice to see Member Bradley nod our head. One question, you've differentiated from Friday, so Friday was 700,000, now it's a million, and if they only need 700,000, you're losing control of 300,000 of free cash that's in your. control of 300,000 of free cash that's in your hands today that's going to go back to the general, back to free cash. You're talking a year before you can use it again. You sure you want to do that?
So, I mean, ideally it would be zero, obviously. But if we're operating from the understanding that this deficit is happening and decisions to change that are, at this point, are kind of limited, then it's a matter of how do we foreclose that deficit most effectively? I think, so I agree with the perspective of, if we were going to tie that up in a special ed reserve fund, which was the intention.
Right.
To be used by the select board and the school committee by a vote of both boards, then if the money closes to free cash and it's not there, then it's not there for the schools to use in fiscal '26 either. So if that means in December we were to appropriate to a sped reserve fund, that's okay. I think that's, that's an option that we have. So I'm not really too concerned about that element. I think the other piece I just want to flag is that we're talking about a successful override scenario. The bigger concern becomes
Negative override.
If an override fails, there's a million dollars in free cash that we intended to use to mitigate the impacts in fiscal '26 that now we don't have. And we, our budget guidance, or my budget guidance has been, we're going to use free cash as necessary in fiscal '26 to fund certain operating accounts, employee benefits in particular, and then town and schools will be able to have a 1% budget increase over '25 to '26 in, if the override were to fail. Now, if we take a million dollars of free cash out of that equation, that's another million dollars in cuts that need to be implemented or decisions made about appropriations in '26 that we have to make. You know, that's where, are we talking about the Chromebooks again? Are we talking about, you know, my override, no override budget does include a payment into stabilization fund because we need to keep up at some metric of our stabilization funds, and that contribution is meant to keep things where they are today. And then thirdly, you know, do we deviate from the select board's policy in terms of contributions to like OPEB? That's a long-term liability. We don't need to fund it, but the select board approved the policy last year saying we would, and now one year later, we're going to deviate from it. So it's just, these are the tricky conversations that have to go into it. So, if the override were to pass, you know, the schools don't have a sped reserve fund for a million dollars that we had planned to help them through a couple of fiscal years. So if the override fails, that's another million dollars that we're looking for in cuts or changes to how the budget is structured. And that is a, that's, I don't have an answer to that today.
That's right. And if it does pass, there's no way you're coming back next year and try again. You know, go for, even two years, it's just, it's just not going to happen. But, Ms. Bradley?
So I have, I have some concerns. I'm trying, I've been trying to gather my thoughts on this.
Give me both.
The million dollars, if we don't put it in the sped stabilization fund, how does that impact the town when we get to FY '29? Because we accounted on that to be growing money, and it won't be. And also, if we've got a million dollars of free cash that we can just, you know, use, I would rather use it for some payroll software or something. Like, I'm not, I am, I am really struggling with this, and I'm not going to lie. I am really struggling. The last two years, the schools have gotten over a 9% increase in their budgeting. And both years, we have, we have, at the end of the year, bailed them out. And they're part of the town, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't be like this. But I, I'm really struggling with what this is going to look like in FY '29 when we have not had this for three years, that we've been packing the money away. So what happens?
So I, I agree.
Okay.
I am just trying to identify what our options are now that we're in this position. So in terms of, in terms of the forecast and how the override would work with the money that we're setting up in the operating budget stabilization fund, so again, there was, the intention of the operating override was two discrete funds for stability. The first was the operating budget stabilization fund, of which $700,000 would be included in the override, and we would fund with $2 million in free cash. The $700,000 in the override would then be recurring. Each year, another $700,000 plus 2.5% if this board approves that, will go into that fund. And that fund will be held by town meeting to appropriate out of.
Right.
The second was the special ed reserve fund, stabilization fund, which again is under the control of this board, along with, in tandem with the school committee. That didn't play into our forecast. So that was separate funding to help the schools through higher unexpected sped years. But our forecast didn't pull that money into the budget.
Okay.
In any way. However, to your point, that's a million dollars that isn't there anymore that would help us through some of those peaks and valleys. So it makes the sustainability harder.
Yeah.
For sure. And even in the override scenario.
Yes.
We, we have two other mechanisms, which is the $2 million in free cash and the 700,000 that's recurring, but it's not the full package that we had talked about to even further that sustainability over the next couple of years.
Okay. So if I can.
Go ahead.
So, so, okay, so we're in this situation, and I, I'm going to need to know what the plan is from the schools if we are in this situation again before FY '30. Like, what is the plan if we're $2 million short in one of these years? What is that scenario? We cannot continue to do this. And I am, I'm being serious. I have been dealing with our budget for eight years. We have done this now multiple, multiple, multiple times. You guys have gotten massive increases. And I understand that we do not spend enough on our students. I get all the stuff. Trust me, I am pro schools.
We are.
I, I'm just, I want to know what the plan is. What's the plan when we're here in two years? Because special ed spiked again at 17%, and we don't have the money in reserves. We don't have a plan for that. We don't have a plan to let teachers go, or let janitorial staff go, or curb something. We don't have that plan. And so you're asking me to, to take a giant leap of faith with a million dollars, which it's so, it's almost a rounding error with how big our budget is. It's, but it matters. Like, there are things that are, that the entire town needs. And I'm just, I'm, I'm here with this. I'm just, I've had it, and I've had it with not being able to come up with a plan. This is now, will be the third year in a row that we could not close the school side of the budget. And, and I don't know, I don't know what this is going to lead us to. And so you're really asking me to just vote for something that, with a wing and a prayer, we don't have to be here in the next three years. So for me, this is a very, very, very hard vote. And I'm, my next question is, do we have to take that vote tonight?
I was just going to ask you that. I don't know that we have to take it tonight if some of them just want some time to think about it. I mean, it's been weighing on my head like a rock for like, every day. I don't sleep off the nights because of it, but I don't think we have to take it tonight, but I think the warrant committee wants to.
They want it?
Yeah.
The clock we're up against is that we're printing the warrant the week of April 7th, you know, the 7th or the 8th. It needs to be off and done. The warrant committee needs to, you know, be wrapping up its work. So because of the cascading effects that this has, it affects both the override budget in a way.
Right.
And what needs to go to town meeting for that, and affects the no override budget and what town meeting needs to have for that. So.
Okay. Can I ask another question then?
Keep going.
If we increase the override amount by, let's say, 100, sorry, Roxanne, by $100,000, so I'm sorry, Ms. Musto, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
If we increase the override amount by, let's say, $100,000.
So 9.5?
Go to 9.6. It's pennies.
You mean, that's a million, oh, 100,000, yeah, 100,000.
So where would that, would that help, would that help us with our cushion, A? Because if we do do that, then it should not go to anything else except for reserves for when we are going to be here before.
What's 100,000 going to do for us?
I don't know. I don't know, but I'm trying to.
All right, I get it, I get it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how.
I get it.
How we are not back here before FY '30. Because when the override passes, fingers crossed, I think it will, but who knows?
Right.
If we are back here before FY '30, which is what we voted on, then what are we telling our neighbors?
Right.
So for me, if we can increase it, and I picked 100,000 because I don't know what else to do.
I thought you were talking about the million, I thought you wanted to say a million, and you said 100,000. That's like, okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Because that's reoccurring. That's why I'm trying to figure out.
I get it.
What is another scenario we could do here so that we're not taking a million dollars out of the stabilization fund?
I don't have, I couldn't give you a quick and easy answer on a number today. I think it would be, if, if we're losing a million, I think you'd be thinking about what's a way to get back to a million as quickly as possible without being too high of an override number. So if, if it's a million over four years, that's 250,000-ish. Obviously, that 250 would grow at 2.5% a year, so it's a little less. But that, I think, gives you a sense of, if the goal is to kind of restore this, then.
I just don't want to be back here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before FY '30.
I mean, I think there's a simpler, one part of this is level service isn't going to be the case anymore. Because it's going, if, if there are less services, there's less funding available, then budgets will have to come in at below level service over the next couple of years because we don't have as many resources available to us.
So this could impact the town side of the budgeting?
My argument would be it should not, but.
And they didn't do it, like, they've been, not, not that someone did, but like, we're holding them, like, they're on a, they're like, mission straight ahead, like, living within what we're telling them. And that's the difficulty. You're correct. Like, I don't know, I don't know, we talk every day. I mean, I don't know where we go from here. If you look at, the town is like a human being, a living, breathing thing. There's a traumatic hemorrhage here, and it's hemorrhaging.
It's been hemorrhaging for years. It's the same hemorrhage.
And at some point, you're going to exsanguinate, and then it's dead. And then, and like, I don't, like, as you know, Chick, I said to you that when, after, it was one of the meetings we had last, I had the reserve fund in my head. I think Amy had the same thought. And I thought maybe that would, and that's only 250,000. I thought that would.
Plug it.
Not even close. Not even close. Like, because that's all we have. We, we live off of.
I know.
Townwide, off a $250,000 reserve fund, and we haven't even touched it yet. Like, we've been, and you've got to deal with snow and ice. Like, I just, I'm with you. Like, I don't know. And whether we're here or not, no, you and I won't be here on 23, that's for sure. But you don't want to, and I, and I like, we have the responsibility to the future as much as we do to today. And that's, I don't know, I'm like, I've never been in waters like this in my life. It's just, go ahead.
May I respond to the question that was asked?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So you asked, what's the plan?
Yes.
Where's the plan? So we overviewed the plan, and I, I appreciate everything you said. You know, our plan is having begun already to build the budget very differently for the schools.
Okay.
So that it, the sustainability, you're asking where's the sustainability?
Yes.
If the sustainability from our vantage point is now built into the school's budget in a way that it has not previously been. So that is, I mean, that's the answer to that question.
But there's no answer if the sped is up?
If sped goes up 14%,
Yeah.
our revenue goes up 2.5%, there, the only thing to do there is to cut. That's the only, that is the only way. That's just the, the basic financial challenges that, you know, Prop 2.5 has and our, and the lack of kind of new development. I'm just, it is the way it is. I mean, the schools are cutting this year. Our budget, our level service budget is cut by 700,000. We have cut that based upon the vote of this board. We are not looking to have this million dollars negatively impact other town departments. That's why we specifically said the special education reserve account that y'all have already identified seeing that free cash too. We're not looking to touch other accounts. We're not looking to touch your, your reserve account for snow and ice, which is 250,000.
Let's go on anyway. Well, you are not getting it, but in the million, it's, it's not there anymore. It's gone. We're using it. There's no money left. So go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, but again, at, at the end of the day, if there, there are, I don't want to misspeak to say that, like, there will be no financial pressures on the school department, and therefore on the town as a whole, because we are one town, one budget. There are ones that we are going to need to manage through, as every town is working to do. And if expenses in mandated lines are exceeding revenues, then we are going to need to cut programming or positions within non-mandated areas.
Okay.
That, and that's just a choice we are going to have to make as a town. We, we feel very good about where the FY '26 budget positions us for next year and the ability to operate within that budget and not be back here. And we feel very good about, again, the new processes being, being implemented on that end. We cannot guarantee you anything, but we 100% have to live within our budget. Town, that's the budget we asked for, and that's the town, the budget the town gave us, and then we did not operate within it for two years in a row. I'm not sure about the third year you referenced, but.
Well, this.
That's not, in my mind, acceptable. It's not what the school committee is excited about. It's, you know, disappointing that we have not been able to close that within the current year. And totally understand all you're saying in terms of the impact. That is not lost on us. We completely understand. I think Nick has shared, the town administrator shared with us too, obviously, the no override scenario impacts.
We have them.
That, that.
We have them.
That scenario would obviously be whatever funds, as we understand it, that are coming out of the free cash allocation would be funds that would affect the school department budget going into next year with a non-override scenario, unless there are other ways in which y'all are looking to kind of close that gap. Because again, this, this overspend issue should not negatively affect police, fire, libraries. It is, as you've said, not their fault. It's not our students' fault either. That's the thing we struggle with.
So I hear what Ms. Bradley's saying. It has been the past three years, basically, if we count this year. And it is concerning. My concern is really if something pops up between now and the next couple of months, say, something on, you know, on the town side, you know, how are we going to cover all of this cost?
Our ability, this board's ability.
Mm-hmm. You know, so something big happens, you know, some kind of a need, I don't know. I don't know, just something, a large item, like.
Well, we don't have to imagine it because it's happened. We had, we had a very expensive snow and ice season. We had more Sunday, Monday holiday storms than anybody would care to have. And a lot of.
Pray for no more storms.
So it's, DPW is in a position to absorb a lot of that because they've been understaffed for much of the year, because they haven't been able to do as much as they normally would, and it means they will do much less than they would like to in a spring kind of construction type season. So we're actively working already when terms of something has popped up. But if something else were to happen, yeah, our resources to pull from are limited, more limited than they usually are. Health insurance is usually a place, to be candid, we have budgetary flexibility. This year, we don't, because as we've talked about with the budget, health insurance budget for fiscal '26, our enrollment is much higher than spent. So we're paying for more premiums than we are used to paying for. So even in places where we typically conservatively budget for a reason, we don't have those resources like we normally would, like we did last year. You know, a few departments do our underspending. Our budget is underspent because the town plan is vacant. Some of the other budgets have had vacancies, but that is, our flexibility is more limited. That being said, that was the case anyway, because the $250,000 in the reserve fund is all we had, and it's, it's 265, but, you know, not a significant difference. That was the case. I would just, I think it's more speaks to, this year is a little bit tighter than normal, which again, would then translate to probably fewer turnbacks than usual, so a little bit less in free cash than usual. So all these kind of cascade downwards in terms of where this budget is. But correct, our, if something pops up, our options are more limited than they might be in a normal year.
Okay. And a follow-up. On the special ed account that you want to set up, is it solely for special ed? Can it be used for anything else?
No, it's not a special ed, in the special stabilization fund.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so again, just to distinguish between the two, there's the one with the override, which is the operating budget stabilization fund, which is.
Yeah, not that.
Any town and school expenses under town meeting approval. The special ed reserve account.
Yes.
Is special ed costs, and I think transportation costs, if transfers out are approved by the select board and the school committee. So that's the distinction there.
So a follow-up. So in terms of it being used for anything other than that?
No. It's not authorized under the law, and.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
The boards would have that, that authority. It's. The boards would have that authority. It's, yeah, I think it's special education, and then recovery high schools are allowed, but that wouldn't be the case here. And then transportation are the three main pillars that are allowed under the law for that kind of a fund.
Thank you.
Isn't circuit breaking money every year?
Yes.
Yeah, circuit breaking money.
It's a reimbursement of prior year expenses.
It's never enough.
I know.
I mean, but that's a state issue.
Is that it? You good?
Just thinking.
I know I, am I turned on? Mentioned it earlier, but I do think some of these things that have been mentioned do change things. You know, the budget committee, the outside consultant review. I sat in, I've sat in on all the finance committee meetings for the past few months, and I've seen Katie come in surprised by some things that had happened. So I think that this outside consultant review of best practices would be a really good thing and is a change. And I think if you also look back at the slide that you showed, you could see they didn't budget enough, and they didn't budget what last year's cost was, you know, so. But if you look further down for 2026, they're now our budgeting for the right amount. So things have changed a little bit, I understand, but these things would be helpful too.
A follow-up to that. How are we paying if we do decide to go with an outside consultant for best practices? Is that a grant we can get? No, because we're not MBTA communities.
No, no, no. You would get a grant for that anyway. You're talking, you're talking, I mean, it's an audit. That's what you're talking about.
You could get it. I mean, there's all kinds of grants.
The community compact program would be
See?
the perfect one to go after.
Oh, there you go.
It's not open right now, but yes, we would not be eligible because of our status with MBTA communities.
Right.
But I think we, that's where I talked about in terms of we need to flesh out the scope.
So how are we going to pay for this?
I need to flesh out the scope and then look at our budget and identify if there is a place where we can pull it from, from fiscal '25 expenditures, without running a risk of us creating our own headaches this year.
Not to minimize expenses, but my understanding was we're talking about a $50,000 or something like that. It's not, we're not talking.
Oh, I understand.
I know, but it's well-spent. I get it. I get it.
I'm not saying it's not well-spent. I would, I am saying that it would be better if we could get a grant for it.
We can't. I know.
But we can't because we're not MBTA
I know.
communities. And so that is hindering us as a town.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean...
We'll go down that road at a later time. Go ahead.
How many things have we lost?
All right, not that many. Go ahead. This is bigger than that. Go ahead.
Just a follow-up question for this best practices. I know that some people in the community have asked about an audit. Is this, is this what an audit is then? Because it's all different kinds of terminology being thrown out there, so just wondering if you could expand upon that a little bit.
My view is I'm not necessarily setting this up to be a fiscal '25 audit. We have auditors. They will come in and do an audit. We're wrapping the fiscal '24 audit with our auditors now. So that, in my perspective, is not what we're looking for. I think what we need is more of a operations, procedures, processes, review, analysis, analysis of technology. Where is Milton behind? Where are things that we're not doing well? Where are things that are creating, you know, duplicate work, unnecessary work, that don't enable us to, you know, maximize the efforts of staff and manage our budgets accordingly? So it's more of a, that's what I'm viewing in a way to build constructive platform for us to implement changes because, you know, things that we've identified as things that we should do better and differently, it involves changing people's jobs and working through those kinds of issues. It involves investing in technology, which is not free, and we're talking about a budget. So I think if we're able to get to a good sense of, here's a really good game plan of how we can build better controls, better practices throughout town and schools, that's good for us in the long run, and I'm more inclined to have that than go and duplicate work that will be done by our outside auditors for fiscal '25 already. So I get, that's my perspective on it. If the board's looking for something different, we can certainly get pricing on that and see what other communities have done, but that's where I am perceiving it, and I need to flesh out the scope a little better, is not quite that.
Thank you.
Anybody else before I comment? You good? So on Friday, or Thursday, when we spoke, you were talking 700,000. Now, the request is a million. If we move 700 versus a million, that would still leak, give you that 300,000. It's in your fingers now versus going into, back in the general, if it's not used, then free cash, and who knows what free cash is even going to be next year? To me, like, you're the operational person, you and Amy, you're the two doing the work. At least personally more comfortable going with what you want. And you didn't even have to tell us now. If you want to, if you want to put it off, like, I can tell Ms. Bradley, I'm kind of in the same boat with Ms. Bradley, so
I would be, that would make me feel better. If we were to put the 300,000 into the reserve, even though it's such a little amount, but at least there'll be something there.
Which reserve are you talking about?
The sped stabilization. So instead of taking that million dollars, and that's what they're asking for, right?
Correct.
Right. So we would just take out 700,000 of that, give it to them to cover this year's hole, and then we can still put the 300,000 in there to get pennies. I don't know. I don't know what the interest rate is.
I hear you, but what if the 700 doesn't cover the hole? We have no more money. That's the, I know why you did it.
Is the 700,000 going to cover the hole?
So the point of the million-dollar request is that it's the full amount that y'all have already identified for the special education reserve. So from our understanding, y'all weren't, didn't have plans for using it for any other fiscal purpose for FY '25 or FY '26. So again, it doesn't affect any other department or the long-term financial planning of the town. The reason for the full amount request is to provide that flexibility of ensuring we don't say 700,000. It comes in at 720,000. And now we have an issue of closing the last $20,000, where we need to come back to a special town meeting or something else. So the goal, or the suggestion, the request, is to move the entire million dollars that y'all already allocated towards the school special ed account, give that back to you essentially to put within the townwide reserve account. And then whatever the number is, if it's 720, if it's 520, that's the number at that point that we would come back to request. As the town administrator said, the rest would close out to free cash under the purview of the town as a whole and can be reallocated within next fiscal year, within the fall town meeting, or, you know, put at that point whatever remains into the special education reserve account, as y'all have already dedicated it for. But if something else occurs between now and then where the board determines you would want to do something else with it other than what you have identified at this point in time, that's obviously the purview of the board. But that's why the full million is the request, is just to provide, ensure we have flexibility to close that at the end of the fiscal year, and we're not underselling it.
I think we're going to do something tough right now.
Compromise, perhaps. Perhaps call it,
Go ahead.
Call it 800,000 and 200,000.
I'm ready to make a motion, so.
I want to make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think, so if we are going to have a deficit at year-end, it needs to go away. And if there's nothing that can be done to foreclose it any further than than their estimates have it today, then it needs to be a zero on June 30th. So that's the problem in front of us. So I would say, you know, just rip the Band-Aid off, call it a day, so we don't have to. The worst-case scenario, as referred to, is are we then amending this for the June 9th or 16th special town meeting with more free cash? That's an option where we could say, it's 700 now. We'll talk to you in 30 days when we know more about the school, the school budget. We know more about the town budget before an article is finalized.
That's what my motion was going to do.
And then, you know, as a third-case scenario is if, if that 300 grand is, does close to free cash, maybe we set it for some other town use and identify, you know, you know, rather than re-dedicated to sped reserve, dedicated somewhere that can be put to use on the town side.
But right now, that million dollars is dedicated to sped reserve for FY '26.
And beyond.
It's free cash, and beyond. It's free cash.
Correct.
My motion was going to be to take 700,000 out of that and put it to the FY '25 operating budget for the schools, but it seems like you want to...
So I think that, I think that would work, and then in 30 days, if
We have to go back and revisit this?
It just means that it would be another, we would be talking about it again at a future town meeting, at another warrant article. I don't, we would have more information, but not perfect information because we'd be having to decide about that probably 30 days from now.
But they were also further along in their...
Right, everybody's a little bit further along.
We could get a better grasp from what the state's going to allocate.
So I'm going to make a motion to remove $700,000 from the FY '26 capital special stabilization fund and transfer that to the FY '25 school operating budget?
No, reserve fund.
Reserve fund, our reserve, to the, I'm serious, to the reserve fund.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Is that Nick's looking up? Was that worded correctly?
No, it's fine. It just means...
If you don't want to, tell me now.
No, it just means for the no override budget and how we build that. Again, this remains, it, we would still, I think, need to commit to not include, if the worst-case scenario is a million dollars, then I think we need to build that no override budget with a million dollars less, even though we may only be tying up 700 grand of it, because...
Now I understand that part.
If the override fails, we're using a million in free cash.
We're building the school override budget with a million less? Or building the town's override budget with a million less?
I think they volunteered to be the school override.
I mean, I have a hard time...
If there are other avenues that would mitigate the impact on kids, we really appreciate it.
I can't do it.
The other, so let me just, so I'll just pull up a slide here just because I think it might help.
Do you want more, if you want more time, we can put this off, and I mean, if we have to do this like Monday morning at 8 o'clock or 8:30, I'm fine with it if the members are more comfortable with that. I get your compromise, Mr. Carr, but I just don't, it's either seven or a million. I don't think the 800 really makes a difference.
Oh, no, I was just...
Yeah, I get it.
I'm just throwing it out there.
So it would be helpful to have some feedback and guidance from the board on this question. So just to remind, and we've talked about this a bit tonight, so the no override budget used free cash to support the budget as kind of broadcast here, a million in retirement, 1.56 for OPEB, 250 for the reserve fund, operating budget support, and then some other items. So if we take a million out, as we've discussed, now there is a million in cuts. The alternative options would be, are we not doing a full contribution to OPEB? In which case, where the select board needs to decide, rather than cut a million dollars more of everybody's budgets, we're going to violate our OPEB policy. Like, these are the, these are the critical kind of go-no-go kind of decisions we need, or do we revisit capital and say, hey, if they're using fiscal 25, if they're using some of this free cash, they can, it'll be up to the school committee whether to say, we're going to buy 400 grand of Chromebooks, or we're going to use that 400 grand to support our operating budget. So like, these are some of the decisions.
I think you already saw how that discussion went the other day.
No, I, that's, right, so.
It's capital committee.
It's not reported.
Oh, it is.
So anyway, that's, I think even if this board tonight says a warrant article in May will be 700 grand of free cash into the reserve fund, I think we still need to build the no override budget, assuming that full million will be used.
And the OPEB issue was, as you know, was created with almost like a gundo I had, like, you need to do this, and it took, we, we, it's almost like going, it's going back to the Chrome, like, they fought so hard to get the Chromebooks, took five years to get the Chromebooks, and now you're talking about taking, you just got it.
Right.
So I can hear Ms. Conlin, Ms. Collins right now, if I open my mouth, but taking OPEB money, so. And I think they'd be right, so. I don't...
That's just if they're, that's just if the override doesn't pass.
Correct.
And if the override doesn't pass, then we're looking at 700,000, not the million. That would be no longer available to close it.
On May 5th, yes, but what if on June 9th, you're looking to appropriate it again?
Right, okay.
So part of me says if it's, if we're taking it off the table for the no override budget,
We should just take the whole thing.
Just take it off the table and give it in the control of the warrant committee, and then it closes to free cash if it's not needed. But it's off the table in the no override budget, and then you know, decisions can be made before town meeting if necessary to kind of change that game plan. But I think for now, we need clarity as to how to approach this and communicate it and explain it. Because, you know, going from a 1.5% increase to basically a 0% budget on the school department side is, that's, that's not, I mean, it's, that's huge.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Did we vote?
No. We got that motion hanging out there, but you can amend your motion.
I think the 700 is fine. I just would say, even though this board is only going to move forward with 700 of free cash now, I think our acceptance would have to be, we go forward building this no override budget as if that full million is not available.
It's not there.
That's true then. And if we don't have to?
Then great.
You don't get 100, you get 300.
Right, to put in there.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. You know, I think even though the OPEB is something we need to do, I think that would be where we would take from.
Well, if it fails, I think we have to look at everything.
Everything, I mean, it's just...
I mean, everything comes to...
So I'm fine with the motion that's on the table, right?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Aye. So, you get that, Lynn?
She's honest.
It's okay, that's why I...
Me neither.
Nick has it.
So what we will have is a, just for clarity, we will, as of now, we will have a, an additional warrant article to appropriate, 700, to amend the appropriation approved at the 2024 annual town meeting to increase the reserve fund by $700,000 from free cash.
Yep.
And so we'll get that to the warrant committee. And not to get too parliamentary, but our analysis is then this can go on an annual town meeting warrant, but some communities prefer to have a current-year appropriation separate and entirely apart from the annual town meeting and do a special, a special, special town meeting the same time and date as the annual town meeting. I don't think we need to. We've consulted with the moderator, we've consulted, who hasn't yet to get back to us. He was looking into it. We've consulted with DOR. But I just wanted to put that out there as, there is one procedural hiccup potentially. It'll still happen. It just might look a little different, so I'll put that out there for the board's awareness.
You've been here. Life is hiccups in this room. Life is hiccups.
We got the hiccups.
So, are we good? So I just, before, I just want to make a couple of comments. Because in the past nine months, this board has taken a lot of heat over decisions we've made regarding the schools, and when I talked about compromise, you got your 9.5 million. You got your April 29th vote moved unprecedented from us. This board voted to give you 5.5 million to get that Cunningham project started, 1.5 million for the feasibility study. We take, all of us take this responsibility serious, but I think people need to understand that the dilemma, like, I look at, all I have to do is look at your face to my left, Ms. Primeferina, Ms. Bradley, who doesn't usually have a look of concern on her face like she has tonight in the past couple of meetings. Like, when the call was made about the, like, we have nowhere else to go for money. Like, we've used everything. We've used. And the anxiety that comes with this, even though at this point all the town departments, police, fire, DPW, libraries are all like holding their own, they're feeling this anxiety as well. They are in, you know, when you tell a department head, and I speak from experience, to go through an override failure exercise, it's real, it's not fake. So I just, I just want to leave you with this one last thing, and I didn't mean to want to bring this up, but I'm sure you all read this article written by the former assistant superintendent from Bill's, Dr. Glenn Patterson. And I say this, and I ask you to carry this back into your meetings with not just the school leadership, but to your fellow colleagues on the, on the school committee. I said this once before, and I'll say it again. He is, people said Dr. Pavchek's my friend. He is my friend today, and I'm very blessed that he is because he's not someone I knew. I met him when he was on the warrant committee. He has been a warrior for this town for three decades. He cheered the warrant committee through days and overrides and issues, the new schools, the new school building committee, and then some. And then he ran for school committee and did the same as a leader there. And then when he easily could have been going to music festivals across this country, which he and his wife love to do, through some personal issues that they dealt with together in the past year, he remained committed to the students of this district. And for that, he deserves our gratitude. It's very sad when I talk to him and I find out that not one single member of leadership in the Milton Public Schools called this man after all he gave to even say thank you. in the Milton Public Schools called this man after all he gave to even say thank you. That says something. As leaders, we want to be influencers, we want to influence people in a positive way. We are all in this town better off because of what this man did for us, all of us, each and every one of us, and I for one, am not going to lose sight of that. So, I hope that you'll carry that back to your colleagues, and I hope that, because for all of us, there comes a time when all of us leave here, and I know my time is coming sooner than others, but for all of us, we leave here, and, and he deserved better for what he gave and sacrificed on behalf of what you refer to so eloquently, the students of the school district. And I, I just think of one child who lives within walking distance of where we are sitting right now, who five years ago, a special needs kid, child who was, who wanted so desperately to ride on a school bus with her older brothers, and under the parameters of transportation, that child would not be allowed to do so, it would have to ride in a special, in a sped, singularly by themselves. Dr. Pavlichek solved that problem to make that happen. To many, that might seem insignificant, but those are the kind of human issues that deal, we deal with each and every day, and he was one who championed that constantly. And for me, I think we're all blessed to have had him, so, that's my final words on this. I hope that you don't have to come back here for more money, but if you do, please let Mr. Milano know. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was well said, and I personally appreciate it, I think I can speak for the board, we appreciate it, we do appreciate Dr. Pavlichek, and we'll bring that back, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the discussion tonight.
Thank you.
And, yep, we'll, we'll be in touch, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hart, I actually, yesterday thought we were going to be done before you got here, and we're just going to item number four, so I want to go back to, let me see where I am, I'm going to go back to item number five, I can't believe it, and welcome, Chris Hart, are you the chair, are you the chair, right, the chair on the Equity and Justice Committee? It's been a long time trying to get you here, so, this is a perfect storm for you, so, thank you for your patience, and I'm glad we're not done. I really thought yesterday, I'm like, we may be done, I was like, we may be done by 8:30.
Well, we'll, we'll see how.
We want to be done by 9:30, so.
Well, no, no promises, but we'll, we'll see what happens. So first of all, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, first of all, for having me here to speak in my capacity as Chair of the Equity and Justice for All Committee, thank you to the members of the select board, thank you, Ms. Milano, and thank you as well for accommodating my schedule, I very much appreciate it. The reason that I'm here, and the reason that I asked to be here is because under our current charter, the Equity and Justice for All Committee is, we'll say recommended to report to the select board on a quarterly basis. Now, we have not been able to keep that charge, obviously, you're busy, we're busy.
Right, I got that.
But we want to make sure to, to try to report as, as often as possible, both to let you know what we're doing and also to get your feedback. For your sake, as well as for the sake of anybody listening, and for the sake of the record, if I could just give a little bit of table setting, the Equity and Justice.
You don't have any slides, do you have any?
I do know.
Okay, okay, I should have asked, okay.
No, I appreciate it.
But if you do, we'll, we'll make it, okay.
I could create some now?
No, it's up to you, well, can you come back in an hour? No, I want to, go ahead, I'm sure you can articulate very eloquently, go ahead.
So the Equity and Justice for All Committee, this, this board created the Equity and Justice for All Committee in the wake of George Floyd's murder, and it had an 18-month charge that concluded in 2022, and it culminated in that committee's provision of a comprehensive report, where the members of the committee provided to the town, and that report's available on the website, it's available on, on the committee page, that report focused on four areas of study, schools, youth and family, police and fire, affordable housing, and town government. And it had a comprehensive set of observations as well as recommendations. The select board did adopt one of those recommendations, which was then to create a permanent Equity and Justice for, uh, Committee, which is the committee that I, that I currently chair. And the charge is the same, and the charge is to advise this committee, and to advise the town on policies, procedures, and budgets for the, or to review town policies, procedures, and budgets for the purpose of advancing equity and justice for all, with a focus on eradicating from the town of Milton oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against people of color. The, the committee now has a membership of 11 individuals, it's been meeting now for the past year and a half, and those are very productive meetings with a very dedicated group of members of the public, and there are a few requirements within the charter about a few seats that need to be, from which those need to come, so for example, somebody who represents the Milton Interstate Clergy Association, for example. Now, a couple of, of items have come up in the course of our discussion that I wanted to raise to this board with, with a suggestion, a specific suggestion. One of the, the issues that's come up is the state of the recommendations that were provided. Now, we provided not only the report, but also a discussion of the report, we provided a discussion of the report and the recommendations to town meeting, and obviously, the report is, is a reflection of an enormous amount of work, but also a lot of commitment from a number of individuals in town. It involved a number of interviews with members of town government, then, the then-town administrator, the chief of police, chief of fire, folks in the Commonwealth as well, and the recommendations, we thought then and we think now are quite important to the town. We also appreciate that the town has a number of other priorities. Let's spend some time talking about one of them.
A lot.
But we don't want this to get lost, and especially now, and I think I, I need to acknowledge this, we, we are currently in a, in a national environment that's hostile to the specific principles that the Equity and Justice Committee is, is really meant to espouse and to, and to look out for, for the town. Now fortunately, that's countered by Governor Healey's and AG Campbell's commitment, recommitment to DEI and specific discussion around the legality of what we're doing, not what we are doing, but about, about these principles generally. And so, the recommendation that I'd like to give on behalf of the board is to request a liaison from this board, that we can, where we can both work with the liaison to try to make sure that as many recommendations as possible are implemented, board might not be seeing, that we're talking about. And so, so I'd like to get some commitment from the board tonight, if possible, about having somebody potentially volunteer to be a liaison.
So, there's only, just because you made me think of something right away when you said this, and I'm not surprised that you asked me this, so, when you say liaison, so like, we want, there's only one committee that we have right now where we have a liaison, and that's the Fire Station Building Committee, and the liaison doesn't vote, is that what you say in liaison versus a member?
Well, I wasn't thinking of a, I'm, I'm, I think, you know, I'm open to whatever the board suggests, I wasn't necessarily thinking about a non-voting member as much as somebody who we could go to as a sounding.
Right, I get it.
Yeah.
And that's what they do, that's basically, I don't, I'm the liaison, I don't go to all their meetings, but they tell me the ones that they want, only because we have a lot of committees.
Sure, yeah.
But I get it, I'm, I'm, I'm the only, my only, and this is only my own suggestion as Chair, is that the board's about to change, and do we wait a month to do it? That's the only, that's the only thing that I'm thinking, unless we have a member that wants to go now, go ahead.
I, I just had a question with regards to this, with Mr. Milano, could you speak a little bit about, with regards to all of this? I know we had a consultant that came in that evaluated everything that we were doing in terms of procedures and so forth with DEI, and I know that, I want to say, I forget how long ago it was, and is there a committee right now of department heads or so, so forth within the town that do have these meetings? Just trying to get a sense so we can understand that piece of it, too.
So, yes, we have an internal working group with a few employees who are meeting to talk about employee engagement, they've recently done a, an employee survey, they've done, I won't really want to call them focus groups, but they've held meetings with employees out, whether at town hall, fire station, down at DPW, so they've gone out to meet, and that's led by the HR Director, Carl LaFede, but those are our kind of, what is the town doing from a kind of day-to-day perspective? That's been it. The consultant, that was all prior to when I started.
Right.
That had been wrapped before I started, but that's what we've been doing with our team internally, and then thinking about, in terms of some of the reporting, in terms of some of our hiring practices, implementing some changes around that. So we've kind of done some small tweaks to things based on what was in that report, but that's kind of as active as we are currently on it.
Other than MICA, are all the other members residents at large, or are the, any of the other entities made up?
No, there are two other seats, one is, and I apologize, you should have brought the charter with me, the other, I think, is from, I think it's Citizens for Diverse Milton.
Okay, all right.
And there's, and there's one other, but unfortunately, I can't.
But not a town, no town agencies, like, not schools or?
No, 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 there's, there's, you know, the, it's, it's meant to be, it's meant to be two things.
I got it.
So you have it right there?
I do. So it's, it's one member of the courageous conversation.
Oh, courageous conversation, thank you.
One of MICA, and then one is a member of Citizens for Diverse Milton, so you got three.
But the, thank you, Ms. Bradley, I appreciate that. Otherwise, it is meant to be a cross-section of the town.
Right.
And in particular, those who are interested.
And did, they were all appointed by this board, we appointed all of them?
Yep.
And they're all willing to stay? Like, is any, is any, that's, if we, I'm just thinking, since you are here, now, let's not waste, let's, let's take care of the housekeeping.
I think, I think, I think we will need to rotate seats off, yeah.
Okay.
But we would have to change the charge to add somebody from the select board.
If we added them as a specific member, as opposed to somebody who I just, who I just.
As a liaison, okay. So, I did speak to Members Zoll about, because I saw this on here.
Okay.
And he said that he would be willing to serve, because he's not up for election, he will be here, it'll be a continuity, so, if that is an option that you want to consider, Mr. Chair.
I'm fine with that.
All right, you want me to make a motion?
You sure?
Yeah, I'm positive, 100%.
Okay.
It's, it's good to assign the person who's not here the work.
Yeah.
Well, that's what happens when you miss a meeting, it's just what, it's just, you know, like, you stay home from school, you get twice the homework, it's just.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Members Zoll, Benjamin Zoll, to the.
No, as a liaison, so we're going to make him a liaison, because that way we won't have to change the charter.
Right, but he's a member of our board.
A member of our board, as, right, as a liaison.
As a liaison to the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
Have a great night.
Well, I have, hold on.
Never ask a litigator, that's it.
I have one thing I want to say, but before I say anything I want to say, does the board have any questions for me about what the committee's been doing, or, or any suggestions based on its own concerns?
So, I thought, and I know, because we've gone back, and I know you're busy, and we've, we've had a busy few months here, referring to the report, is that, do you want to, do you want us to, on a future date, add you where you can come in, and I think if you're willing to do that, but I'd rather give you some time to do it.
I, you mean, walking through the recommendations of the, I would be thrilled to do that.
All right, so let's, why don't we do this, I'll let you decide when you want to do it, and that way you can just let Nick know, that way I'd want to carve out some time, and that way, I would, I mean, I'm not telling you, but if you want to make like a presentation or, we'd make it so that.
I want to do whatever is helpful to this board and to, and to the members, and to the citizens of the town.
I'm, I think, to the second aspect of what you just said, it's even more important, so, I'm, especially, you are correct, at a national level, it is, it is a, a significant topic today, and you are correct, in, on Beacon Hill, there is significant effort to retain what has been ongoing for the past four years, five years, at the state level, so.
Well, so, so then I, then I thank the board, then for both, both the appointment of the liaison, as well as the opportunity to have a more comprehensive conversation, and that's a perfect segue to where I wanted to end, which was just to say this.
See, I do, just to say what?
It's just to say this, and, and I think it's important for me to say this, and I, and I would encourage anybody in leadership to say something similar because of the environment that we're in, and that is, I am deeply and unapologetically committed to this work.
I get it.
And I think it's incredibly important for building community and trust in Milton, and I'm grateful to the select board for having us continue this work and working with us to accomplish it.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
It's not easy to do.
No.
No.
But I, but I appreciate, I appreciate the support, so thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
That was quick.
I just keep going.
All right, let's go, oh wow, I'm being pushed, okay, item number seven, discussion approval fiscal year '26 budget, FY 2026 capital budget, Mr. Milano, you got two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will just jump to the highlights, so, just to kind of refresh folks on what, since the override question is moving forward, so, we didn't display it last time, but here it is, shall the town of Milton be allowed to assess an additional $8.8 million in real estate and personal property taxes with the purpose of funding the operating budgets of the town and public schools, and an additional $700,000 in real estate and personal property taxes with the purpose of funding an operating budget stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, so.
That doesn't have to.
Nope, so this is what is, had, has been sent to the town clerk, reviewed by town council, and will appear on the April 29th town election ballot. Reminder of the operating budget stabilization fund, although we've already talked about this a bit, 700 grand in fiscal '26, this board then votes on an annual basis whether to increase that by the 2.5% allowed under Prop 2.5 or not, this board can vote to decrease the amount, but if it does so, then it can only go up by 2.5%. So this select board is then asked to increase it by 2.5% each year, funds may be taken out of the fund with two-thirds approval of town meeting, and as we've talked about, it's, you know, the intention is to set aside this additional funding to support the budgets in future years. We've posted a website, our webpage on the town website, with information about what an override is, what Proposition 2.5 is, what the impacts on folks' taxes will be, why where the town is in a position where it's requesting an override, so, that is up now, linked through the homepage under the government tab. We have a tool where you can go in and enter your address, where you can see what the impact, the anticipated impact of a $9.5 million override would be if it were approved, it'll tell you what your total tax bill will be estimated to be, again, in '26 with it, and then what portion of that is attributable to the override. And as we've talked about here, the average single family is 1,063 for the override, and then that increases each year, is permanent, an operating override is permanent, and then the median single family is a little bit less at 9.20 in year one attributable to the override. So again, all of that is up on the town website, we'll continue to populate that with information as we receive questions, we've got, we have contact info on there in case questions arise and folks want to reach out. We already talked a bit about the balanced budget in terms of the big picture, so, I'll leave that alone, other than to move forward with building that balanced budget override without this million dollars that we had planned to use in free cash per our earlier conversation, which will mean a further reduction to the school department budget for fiscal And then on the town side, I know we've communicated, I've shared this with the select board, but to tell you where things stand on the town side for cuts, so I'll just run through these. We are planning to leave the town planer position unfilled, we've posted the position twice, and think, you know, further progress and momentum on the MPT communities might help us get a bigger pool, so, I am planning to leave that position vacant for the time being. We have a annual contribution to a shared housing services office, last year, or this year, it's being paid by the Affordable Housing Trust, and in no override scenario, I would propose not to pay it out of the select board, and have the Affordable Housing Trust pick it up again, they may do that anyway, in which case we'll just cut it out of the budget, but certainly, if the override fails, we won't do that. Proposing that we don't keep the Wildcat Den anymore, so that would mean savings on the select board budget for rent, and then you'll see down below in the Parks Department, the Wildcat Den position would be eliminated, so that'll remain open through this school year, if the override were to fail, it would, it just wouldn't reopen in September, and I'll also note that our three-year agreement with the church is up in August anyway, but something we'll have to revisit if the override is successful, just to extend that agreement. Council on Aging and Eliminating the Supplies Budget here, forcing the Council on Aging to turn to its gift funds and grant funds to support its budget, eliminate the appropriation for MPIC, that work is winding down anyway, but I know they will have some recommendations about what to do moving forward. what to do moving forward. And Police and Fire, two positions would be left vacant, and then they would lose some overtime funding as well as some equipment replacement. The cruiser replacement of the police, I'll just flag, because their budget has remained the same, but vehicles don't cost what they used to cost, and the, and the three cruisers that they used to replace are now down to two.
That's right.
So the request was to get it back up to three replacements a year. Parks I mentioned and Wildcat Den, Cemetery, cuts there as well. A position at Consolidated Facilities, which was recently established through restructuring their organization a little bit, through their level of service budget. Cuts to the Health Department. Library would eliminate all Sunday hours, summer Saturdays, and then have an 11% cut to their books and materials to impact availability of books, but also, in particular, eBooks would be impacted there. In terms of Public Works, vehicle maintenance, seasonal staff, our co-ops, who, yes, they're co-ops, but they help get our paving programs moving, so that will translate to an impact in terms of what we're able to do for our paving program. And then lastly, we have a traffic engineering consultant that was put into the budget a couple of years ago, that would be eliminated from the budget. We would reduce the appropriation for veterans' benefits. We would eliminate some funding for IT in terms of software support and upgrades. And then lastly, since there are some positions affected by these changes, there would be savings in how we've structured our set aside for collective bargaining agreements, since those positions won't be funded and filled, we don't need to set aside any money for any potential contractual adjustment for those vacant positions. So ultimately, that's about $1 million, $1,500,000 in cuts in fiscal '26 if the override were to be unsuccessful, which means the town budget would be going up 1.5% from '25 to '26. That's the landscape of what I propose and what we've been communicating with department heads about.
Questions, anyone? I know, once the shock was, just on the veterans, is that his entire, is that the entire salary of the?
No, that brings the, it doesn't affect the position, it affects the amount of money available for benefits.
I get it.
I'll just say that those benefits are statutory, so-
Right.
If people sign up and receive the benefits, we owe it anyway.
Right.
So whether the money's in the budget or not, we're paying it if the, if the need is there. It just means we will, we'll allocate it closer to what our historical spend has been and eliminate a little bit of flexibility in that budget to account for years where we have more veterans signing up for benefits than usual.
That position is empty right now.
It will be Monday, Monday?
Monday?
Yeah, so-
So Randolph is advertising.
They've advertised it.
They're advertising.
They've closed the application pool.
They've closed the pool already?
Yeah, the deadline has passed, they have a bunch of applications.
I understand. I was thinking if we could save a couple dollars.
They've got, so in our agreement, you can tell me if I go wrong, he's act, the, or she, is actually an employee of the town of Randolph-
Correct.
And they share with us.
Correct.
And I was aware that they had a pretty good-sized pool right off the bat that would be interesting.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I had for the, the operating budget, I just wanted to run through those, those cuts with the select board. So we'll provide those to the Warren Committee for town meeting.
So is that the first to vote tonight? We've already done all this.
Correct.
Okay.
What's going on with the capital budget though?
The capital budget remained intact, we didn't touch it.
So that's what happened at the meeting?
We didn't touch it.
Yeah, no change.
But we haven't voted on the capital budget yet, have we?
Did we?
You're correct, we haven't.
That's what I thought.
See, you're always a Warren Committee person.
I am, but still, what are you guys going to do without me?
You want to come back as a consultant?
Oh no.
How about a liaison?
You funny. You need us to vote on that.
Mr. Hart's smiling over there.
You're a liaison, aren't you?
Yeah, see? Maybe I should be a liaison. Sounds enticing.
What do you want to do, Mr. Milano?
We'll make a mo, if you give us the number-
We haven't seen it.
I was just going to say, I thought I had distributed, and now I'm looking back to see if I have.
It's not in it.
We'll put it on the next meeting.
Can I wait till the next meeting?
Can we wait till you wait?
Yes.
Okay.
They can continue to go through the motion, the, the process outside of this.
But we don't need to, we did the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Good catch. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item eight, discussion update approval town meeting articles for the Monday, May 5th, 2025 annual town meeting. See, here's our list. Do we want to vote any of these tonight, or what, do we need to vote all of these?
Uh-uh.
No, we don't, right, no?
No, everything, we approved all these articles listed for inclusion at our prior meeting.
Okay.
We will revise the Special Education Stabilization Fund to establish it, but we will appropriate no dollars to it.
Correct.
But it will be established.
Can I also ask that we move the general bylaw amendment up above the zoning bylaws, since it actually is, I don't want to say it's more important, but it definitely has more weight?
You want to change the number on that?
Yeah, there's no numbers yet, but zoning bylaws come under general by, it's like-
I'm fine with that. You okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, I can restructure that.
Okay.
And then we will add-
I'm with you on that.
We are going to add the one voted earlier this evening regarding the Reserve Fund.
Yes.
And I anticipate including that after hearing the report of town officers, so it would be one of the first actions taken by the town meeting, unless the board feels differently. It's a prior budget year matter-
Yep.
Prior to diving into the new budget year.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
The, since we're not going to, I know that Agenda Item Number 10 schedules this for an April 8th hearing, public hearing, is that going to, that's going to bump us too close to the warrant, it's not going to be printed in the warrant then, will it?
So what will go in the warrant, and that's actually a good catch, sorry. So what I had drafted to go on the warrant is what this board ultimately-
Yes.
-voted the night of the special town meeting.
I want to make one change to that.
Okay.
Instead of it saying the select board, it should say the select board or their representative.
Or their designee.
Designee, or, yeah, because I think that Mr. Fahey, when he brought that up, was actually a good point. But I can talk to you about that offline.
So we could have that done. So I'm gonna make, I'm, take, make that as a motion as a friendly on that, you all right with that? I want to, want to make a motion amend? Do we need to vote it? No, okay, so we're going to amend that, I'm all right with that, so we have the motion, I'm fine.
Okay.
Good? Good. Did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand, your finger go up, no?
No, but I was just wondering if we could have a copy of that ahead of time, like with that little con direction on it, you know?
Yeah, we can redistribute that tomorrow once we finalize it.
Okay, good.
Okay, do we, so we don't need to vote any of this? Alright.
We need to approve the table of contents, right?
We need to approve. Yes, so-
We can approve the full warrant at our meeting on April 8th.
Okay.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not complete and the budget numbers aren't final, so I'd rather give you a final-
So this motion, we're not going to use this right now?
Not now.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion approval, April 29th, 2025 annual town election warrant, proposed motion, move to approve the annual town election warrant dated April 20, are we doing that tonight or no?
Yeah, the board can vote on that.
So I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10, discussion approval scheduled public hearings for April 8th, 2025. There'll be two items, item A, general bylaws amendment light trespass, and item B, number two, which is the, we're going to bring back the article, the general bylaws amendment, alcohol on outside town, is it just alcohol on town property or outside?
I've been referring to that, but it would be in town land, really.
So, for the record, I've asked the town, we're going to take this on the road, we're going to hold the April 8th meeting at the Milton Arts Center, and it'll be advertised, we'll put it up. The only caveat we found out today is Milton Access can't broadcast it live, they will videotape it, and it would go up at midnight that night on the, which they've done, they've done on the school committee a lot, they did that two weeks ago on the school committee meetings, so it's, it is legal, it's, it doesn't, it's not outside, you know, I want to make sure it's something we could do.
Why are we, why are we going on the road?
Because the biggest part that's impacting all this dealt with Manning Park and events there, and that's why I thought, well, let's just, if you don't want to, we don't have to, I mean, I can just have it here.
My only concern is that those residents won't be able to watch live with what's going on. I, I mean, I don't, I just want to bring that up with transparency and everything.
Oh, I know. And I, had they not been able to get it as fast as it comes up, it actually could be up before midnight, I've just, I did think of that, but, like, I'm watching, how many are watching all night? It's not that many, it's not, it's a really minuscule number. More people watch it, myself going to watch it on YouTube than, than watch it live, because we have that capability now, and that met, met the town bylaw, we record it, we review, we post it. I just thought of it, if you don't want, then I figured, take you on a road trip for one of your final meetings.
Yeah, we've only got two left.
That's right.
Roadie.
Bring on your roadies, if we can.
Stop.
No roadies. No roadie.
So that's what we're going to do, so we're going to go, we're going to, and you can arrange that with Ms. Clifford.
She confirmed it was available.
Okay, perfect, so, alright, all good.
That MTV thing was the-
Okay, so item number, so we're not going to make a motion on any of these, are we going to move, do we need to vote for this tonight? We're not doing it tonight, the most of them?
Let's vote to schedule the public hearing, just so I have it.
Alright, so I'm going to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for April 8th, 2025 for the town general bylaw on light trespass and town general bylaw amendment alcohol on town property.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye, thank you. If we could let Deputy Alba know, maybe perhaps he can make sure that night he tells the post office the day before that we're going to be needing, using all those spaces. Okay, item 11, discussion approval special town meeting prior to July 14th, 2025, want relative to MBTA Communities Act zoning, potential dates June 9th, June 16th, June 23rd, and other articles that I thought you had talked about, you want the 9th or the 16th?
So both dates work, this board had preferred the 9th a little bit earlier, the planning board did say an extra week would be great, so that their preference would be the 16th. I think between the two, I don't see too much of a difference, the last week of school is that week of the 16th, however.
I think the last day-
I thought it is the 16th.
That's what I thought, too.
I think it is the 16th.
Hold on, I'm looking right now, oh no, I think Ms. Musto's right.
I think it's the 18th, I thought that's what you were saying.
Ms. Musto's right, it's the 18th, did we have a snow day?
Not yet.
No, so it is the 18th.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were saying.
Snow day, oh, no.
Not yet, no.
That's my math.
Alright, so what's, we good for the 16th? All those in favor, make them, I'll make it as a motion, we're going to schedule for the 16th, all second, someone second.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Musto, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, item number 12, discussion approval letter to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services regarding hospital capacity and ongoing impacts of recent hospital closures.
I didn't do my homework, I did not draft a letter.
We'll come back to that, so we'll come back, we'll-
We'll have that for next time.
And then why don't we plan to meet next week to make sure we get it.
Don't you do it, you will, you'll handle that?
Yeah, I'll work with Nick on that.
Okay. Moving right along, let's get another page.
13.
13. How did I, okay, wow, look at all of these. Okay, 13, discussion approval, permanent grant of easement for Pine Gardens Development 227 Pleasant Street. The motion would be to move to approve the permanent grant of easement of Pine Gardens Development 227 Pleasant Street, Milton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.
Aye, sorry.
All those, you got it, you got it. Discussion approval, select board's fiscal year 2024 annual report, Mr. Milano.
Former chair and member of Zulus, Mike Zulus worked on the report for us, we made some tweaks that I think Lynn had redistributed on that report, but otherwise, I thought it captured the work of the select board in that fiscal year, so we thank Mike for putting it together for us.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Yes, I had gone over, there were a few little typos, so I had pointed them out to Lynn. The other thing is, I noticed that they, with the different committees, there were spots that said vacant. I don't believe that prior books have had that on there, and I think for consistency, it would make sense not to. And it also will take up less room for printing purposes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's, I think that this might be something that we might want to take a look at, including moving forward, because I think it does matter. Like, I didn't know that one of these committees was vacant, vacant. And so to me, looking at how many positions we have opened is also a way for all of our town neighbors to see what is available for them to apply for. So I actually think it is important that we include the vacancies that we have, so that we can try and get more folks to apply for some of these committees. So for me personally, I would like to keep it.
So you want to put that in the town report?
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's what she was saying, but I thought that we list the vacancies up on the website, too, don't we, usually, or, Mr. Milano, don't we?
Correct, yes, on a, we post them and we identify which communities are vacant, and then, communities, committees, excuse me, and then the individual webpages will also identify the amount of members and who the current members are. It's a, just, it's more a preference of appearance.
I just, yeah.
I don't care, I'm okay with that.
About keeping them in?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, let's keep them in.
I'm fine with that, that's like, I mean, whether it's on the website, whether it's in the, it's-
I was just thinking, because it's bio, it didn't have it, that's all.
I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, where was I?
Perhaps not the right place for it, but we could insert another line underneath it and say, for those interested in joining the board or committee, here's how you can go.
That is brilliant.
The other time, you do it how you want.
So we'll, we'll add that in.
Sure.
Okay, where was, 15, this is still a miss? Nope, 14, 15. Discussion approval, acceptance of a gift from WAFS Park Project. This, I'm going to move to accept the gift for the WAFS Park Project from the Friends of Milton Recreation, the amount of $6,300. And I thank Mr. Scott McKay and his crew, Bill Madden, the whole crew of them that are working on this.
And can I just do an amendment to that, just, or?
Let me get a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. Okay, go ahead.
If you could amend that to include and future gifts related to this project.
And future gifts, and any future gifts related to this project. Is that all right?
That works.
Get that, Lynn?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
16, discussion approval, appointment of Epstein in August, LP, special counsel for the cable licensure agreement renewal services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as background, our cable license agreement with RCN slash Astound slash Stone Peak, whatever name they're operating under, is up in October. So we've been trying to identify a place for, identify special counsel for that process. We've reached out to Epstein in August. They're available. We've had a couple of conversations with them to prepare that process. RCN is about 380 subscribers, so it's not the biggest contract in the world. But going through this process with them as we prepare for Comcast renewal in a couple of years is prudent and important. So we will, this will be a good way to get used to them as we get ready for the bigger renewal, that is the lion's share of the money that comes to the town. So I recommend the appointment of Epstein in August as special counsel. We usually always have special counsel for this, this renewal.
And this will come out of the legal line item?
Either legal line item or MPEG would cover it.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just on a sign on, I did have an interesting meeting this morning with the undersecretary of Consumer Affairs and Business about the future of cable. And they're pretty blunt that cable's going away. Like, it is, and it will impact communities in that, particularly for like Milton Access, local cable companies, the funds that they derive from cable subscribers is going to be a revenue that's, and I believe Shane has talked about this in his reports, that it's going to start to dry up. And it's similar to what electric vehicles, how they're going to have to make up the road tax that is not, that's 21 cents a gallon we pay for gas that is not, but the vehicles still use the roads. And that's, that's a path that legislatures is trying to figure out now, so.
Oh, I'm getting a free.
But cable, yeah, she was really, it was, I, it was a really good meeting. She was very about the future of cable. Like, it's all about the fire stick and there's another device, too. Now you get those, you get everything right off of.
Well, your TV's like a rock acoustic.
Yeah, stream, yeah. It's all about streaming.
I haven't had cable here.
It means stream, like over the air.
What's it called? Rodeo?
Yeah, like over the rock.
Really?
A rokustick, yeah. They talked about the rokustick.
Yeah, my TV's just stream them.
Wow.
So you can't get this then, from TV? You have to go on your computer and you go on Milton Access.
So when I want to watch this, I go on my computer and I click on their live YouTube. Actually, that's not true because I also have YouTube on my television.
I do, too, yeah.
So I click on that and Milton Access TV is the only one that's favored. So I watch it there, on my telly. Now that everybody knows that, we can move on.
What, did you come running up here when you hear me talking about this?
Yeah.
Okay, so where was I? What number were we?
We just approved.
You're on 16.
16, discussion approval, appointment of, oh, yeah, we did that, 17. Discussion approval date for public hearing for the ascertainment of needs for Stone Peak Cable License Renewal on the 22nd, 2025. Is that what you are here for? No.
This is the first step in that process of negotiating with Stone Peak slash Astound slash RCN for the license renewal. So we will have a public hearing. We'll invite MPEG to come, make a presentation about the need for the PEG funding and what it funds and the work that they do, obviously, that we are benefiting from as we speak. So it'll be, you know, making our case so why we can go to RCN and ask for PEG payments to the town. So that's what that public hearing is. So if folks who support MPEG's work and Milton Access TV's work, you're welcome to submit comments in writing to the, to our office or to come to the public hearing and speak in support of the work that they do.
Can I just ask, who's Stone Peak?
It's the new owner of RCN, RCN.
Okay.
I thought they changed to Astound.
Well, I don't know which one it is right now. I'm going to be honest.
That's what I thought it was, to Astound.
Astound, yeah.
Come on up to the table. Director of Milton Access Cable. Good evening, Shane. How are you?
Hi, Shane Brinerberg, Executive Director, Milton Access. Is it Stone Peak?
It's listed here as Stone Peak.
They're the VC for, owns a lot of random things. And they bought Astound, I want to say a year or two ago.
There you go.
Should have known better.
Do we just vote? Are we going to, all those in favor? Did I, I made that, so I made that, I made that as a motion. Did some?
I'll second.
I made that as a motion, yeah, hearing for April 22nd, 2025. That's going to be the hearing date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're off the hook. Thank you. Item 18, discussion, this is the consent agenda. I'm going to make this in the form of a motion. I'm going to read them. So these are applications. Town Green Baron Hugh Gazebo, Deb Lawson Venable, First Parish Church, Sunday, April 27th, 1:00 to 3:00 for a dog show to benefit First Parish. Next is Becky Stone, Cover PTO on Milton Mosaic, Sunday, June 8th, from 11:00 to 3:00 Caribbean Carnival. Three is Jennifer Raymond, Saturday, June 7th, 2025, from 11:00 to 5:00 for the Milton Pride Celebration. Fourth is Frank Wilson, United Congregational Church, and that's going to be for the annual strawberry festival, which is a big deal. And then the last one is a one-day look on San Agus Parish, 432 Adams Street, April 5th, 2025, 5:30 to 9:00 PM, the Danny Gill concert. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Approved. Okay. Oh, I didn't even see. I could have used item B on this. I didn't, okay. Now, let's see, on to item number, I did 19. 19 was there. That's Dan, that's, is that a separate one?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, 19. Discussion approval, donations to the Milton Coalition. 180, this is a motion. I'm making 184 from the Sakar family, $200 from the First Parish in Milton. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question? Ms. Question?
No.
And thank you to both, thank you to both families, or both organizations, family and organization.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 20, discussion approval, meeting minutes, February 11th, 2025, February 18th, 2025, February 24th, 2025, and February 25th, 2025. Do I have, on the 24th, noted, Ms. Bradley was absent, so I'm going to do everything but the 24th. All those in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the 24th, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Ms. Bradley?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Okay. Move to approve the meeting minutes as amended. Oh, no, we did that, okay. Move, okay, last thing.
Town administration.
Town administration's report. Mr. Milano, been a long day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really just two announcements. One for the board. We sent, Cheyenne Fraser sent out an invite to a site visit to the Ice House Project. It's on Saturday, April 5th, I believe is the date. So if you're interested in touring that building as they're wrapping up work and starting to prepare for leasing, the members are welcome to come. If, we'll check in a couple of days before it, so if we have to post in case there will be a quorum. But I'll just put that on your calendars if you're interested in seeing the project as it's nearly done. And then secondly, town election, we've talked a bit about the override, but the election, obviously, April 29th. April 18th is the last day to register to vote. The town clerk's office will stay open until 5:00. That's a Friday. But, you know, check your voter registration and you can also sign up to register to vote online. But more importantly, if you're interested in voting by mail, you have to apply to vote by mail again this year as, in order to vote by mail in the annual town election. That deadline is April 22nd at 5:00. So again, if you voted by mail last year, don't presume you're going to get a vote by mail application this year. You have to sign up again this year. And you will have to sign up again each year to elect to vote by mail. So that's just an important note for those wishing, intending to vote by mail rather than in person. And there won't be any early voting in person with the town election.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That is it for me, Mr. Chair.
Nick, can you tell us how we would vote, how we would sign up to vote by mail? Because I, I thought that when secretary, not secretary, when.
Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk sent out that postcard and we all checked off.
That was the secretary. You were correct. That was for, because it was for.
It was the secretary, okay.
And the, it was, the timing was funky last year because they were doing it to elect to vote by mail in all state elections for the year.
Yes.
And it would apply to local elections. And it happened to hit before the special election that Milton had.
I understand.
So it was, that's why it captured all of that, but we don't have the means to send out an annual notice.
So how do people sign up to vote by mail?
The information's on the town clerk website. They can go into the town clerk's office. It is an application to complete.
Perfect.
And submit.
Thank you so much.
It's quick. It's quick. All right, is that good? So Chair's report, I just want to take a second here to thank Mr. Milano and Amy and Joanna, who are town accountant and our town treasurer, who worked so hard on an issue that has come, that has come before us. And in light of that, I want to thank the members of this board, including Mr. Zoll, who's not here tonight, who, these have not been easy weeks and months here. I mean, we're in a situation unlike anything I've ever seen, not just an override of unprecedented numbers, but to kick a money tree till it falls over and then there's nothing left. And we've never, no board has ever had to go through anything like this. And I know this has been very tough on everyone. And some people are mad at us and write some releness, but it's our job to keep this boat moving forward. You know, when people dial 911, that someone has, the school bus has to show up, the teacher has to be in the front of them. Those things are critical to maintaining the pulse of life in this town. So I want to thank my fellow members of the board here and as well as Mr. Milano, Amy, Joanna, and everyone at Town Hall who's worked so hard to keep this ship moving forward. Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment response? We didn't have any. It's unbelievable. Future meeting dates, April 8th, we're going on the road. Elaine, get that in the paper. April 22nd, April 30th. Town meeting dates, Monday, May 5th, Tuesday, May 6th, and Wednesday, May 7th. Future agenda items, Ms. Bradley, if you have any, don't waste any time. You want to get those on the 8th?
I think I do.
No. Mr. Chair, if I can just mention, on April 30th, we put that on, but the board can decide what to have its organizational meeting. The swearing and ceremony will be that evening that the town clerk will hold. Depending on the outcome of the override, there may be matters to discuss, but perhaps the next day might be a little abrupt. But we can, maybe at the April 8th meeting, make a game plan. So the board and potential members will have awareness of when that will be.
So in the past, go ahead.